Good evening. We will call this meeting of the Windsocket City Council to order. Adam Clark, roll call, please.
Councilman Canoyar.
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Gillette. Councilwoman Sierra. Councilman Susie.
Here.
President Ward.
Speak into the mic, Mr. Susie.
Here. There is a quorum present.
Speak into the mic.
Excuse me. I think he did, the second time.
No, he didn't. He still left it there and he just said, says...
Okay.
As I watch.
Just for your information, I did receive a call from Councilwoman Sierra. She expressed her regrets that she won't be able to attend. She was not feeling well. So with that, if we'd all please stand for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
God our Father, we ask that you send your blessing upon this city and upon this council. Guide us in our efforts, increase our motivation, and strengthen our resolve to build a better community and ensure a brighter future for the city of Windsocket. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we begin, I'd like to welcome some new council members who are sitting to the table at the side. I see Brian Thompson. I see Chris Beauchamp hiding behind the chair, and Scott McGee. Welcome. First item on the agenda, Agenda for Board of Licensed Commissioners.
Twenty-two LC forty-two, application of licenses and renewal of licenses.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilman Canoyar. Any discussion? Hearing none. Whoop.
No, these are just real quick. These are for holiday licenses, tobacco licenses, quarterly entertainment, vitroling first class and vitroling second class. And there's a whole list of entities that are involved.
And if there's no further discussion, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes have it, and the licenses are approved.
Twenty-two LC forty-three, a request of Wendy Gerton, Windsocket Warriors, to hold a Tag Day event on Saturday, November twenty-sixth, with a rain date of Sunday, November twenty-seventh, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilman Canoyar. Discussion?
Council President.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I just want to congratulate the Windsocket Warriors who made it all the way till the finals. There's seven members who are making it to Nationals, and both, two of their cheerleading teams are making it to Nationals. So when you see, if this gets approved, if you see those, um, those young people with their buckets, please let's help them get to Florida.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will simply say, yes, please. It's not free to attend these events. They need all the help they can get, so please be very generous when you see them out there on the Tag Day. So, thank you for that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Before we move to public comment, I just want to recognize Councilwoman-elect Garrett Bensari, who's also shown up and is in attendance at the meeting this evening. And now to public comment. Is there anyone here to address the council? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and address the council. Going once, twice? Okay. Oh.
Since 2007, I've been coming to these meetings. And every meeting I come to, I have to say, speak into the mic, because you guys just don't know how. Is that right, Mr. Susie? Do you know how?
I know how.
Then speak into the mic.
Thank you. Anyone else to address the council? If not, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to...
Motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilman, Councilwoman Gonzalez, seconded by Councilman Canoyar. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda for other discussion?
Yeah, just one. The American Rescue Plan Act, um, report. So it's twenty-two, CO eighty-six. I just want to have one comment on that.
Okay. All right. Anything else? If not, all in favor of the consent agenda as proposed, except for the twenty-two CO eighty-six, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. And the consent agenda is approved, and now twenty-two CO eighty-six. Do I hear a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
By Councilman Susie, seconded by Councilman Canoyar. Discussion? Councilman Canoyar.
Director Chamberlain, quick question. On the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, report, the last item is the premium pay for the police, Local eight oh eight, the two-hundred-twenty-seven thousand. Well, they've been paid that correctly. That payment has gone out.
Yes.
Did it go out before the end? I thought it went out before the end of October. If you, yeah, just check. And if it did, can you just have Paul update this to, because it shows the, uh, the allocation, but the actual expenditure shows a zero at this point. And I thought they got paid before November first, but if not, that's fine. They'll show up in the next report.
Okay.
Because this is through October, so. But I did think they got, uh, paid before the end of October, so. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the report is accepted. Next item is minutes.
Motion to approve, uh, accept and approve the minutes from November seventh.
Second.
To approve by Councilman Canoyar, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez to accept the minutes as presented for the meeting of October, uh, I'm sorry, November the seventh, 2022. Any corrections or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Next, presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrances.
Twenty-two P forty-four, request of Councilman Canoyar to address the following items. One, fiscal year 2023 tax assessments and a tax assessment department.
Thank you. So, just a little bit of a repeat from the last meeting. Although I did hear, the reason I put it back on, is because I heard some comments from Mayor Lett Baldelli-Hunt on the radio indicating that the problems with the tax assessments is because the city of Windsocket, um, brought in Vision, brought in Vision appraisal. Which is just, with all due respect, utter nonsense. Vision appraisal had done the city's appraising work and assessment work for many, many, many years. We brought in Northeast, um, in 2017 for one cycle, and we had, um, literally hundreds of appeals, um, in connection with that. So we went back to Vision appraisal. But a couple of points I want to be very clear for the public on and for my colleagues over here, that this is going to end up in your lap when you get up here. The, the RFP, the Request for Proposal that was sent out, um, it was issued on June fifteenth, 2020, when Ms. Parry was not working for the city. She was working for the city of Providence at the time, so she was not the tax assessor. She's the, uh, temporary assessor at the moment, I guess. But, so this appraisal, uh, this, this RFP went out in 2020. And let me read to you a couple important items in this RFP. Completion of the project. The completed appraisals, upon approval of the assessor. Not upon approval of Vision, but upon approval of the assessor, will serve as the basis of assessments, the effective date of December thirty-first, et cetera. Okay? Second thing, keep in mind. Nature of service. It is clearly understood and agreed that the services rendered by the company, i.e. Vision, are in the nature of assistance to the assessor, and all decisions as to the property valuations, taxable or tax exempt, shall rest with the assessor, not with Vision. Okay? So... My message is real simple. We've been through this already, but there's an issue here. The multifamilies, as I said previously, the single families had an increase in values on average. They went up fifty-seven percent. Multifamilies went up to the tune of one-hundred-eighty-five percent, ninety percent, et cetera. But if you look at just the, the levy itself, the single-family levies, last year, the total levy was nineteen, nineteen-point-nine million. It went down this year to eighteen-point-three million. Okay? So there was a reduction of about one-point-three million for the single families. So, single families in total, the total we collected from single families went down one-point-three million. By the way, there were thirty-five additional single-family properties this year versus last year, so you'd think that it would have gone up. But the total levy went down one-point-three. By contrast, the two families, the threes, the fours, the apartments, um, the multis, their assessment, year over year, went up three-point-two million. So the single families in total came down a million, about a million-three on a gross level. That's even before the homestead exemptions. And the multifamilies went up three-point-two million. And that may or may not be right or wrong. We won't pass any judgment at the moment. But the issue, and we keep coming back to this, is that the council did not have an opportunity to even consider making adjustments to A, the levy, or B, the homesteads, because it was never provided to us. The budget book that we got, we received on time on May thirteenth, but it did not have the levy. So we didn't get the, the book with the levy in total, not detail, until May twenty-seventh. Okay? And we had a public hearing, as is required by our, our charter, um, on May thirty-first. So we got it, the budget book with the total levy, in total, on May twenty-seventh, with a public hearing on May thirty-first. Nobody, including the public, I think, had any real meaningful time to kind of grind through this stuff. And then we were criticized for not passing the budget six days later on June sixth. But again, we've asked for the information. Councilwoman Gonzalez, you asked for it right about the time I did. Have you seen any more information? Have you done any more analysis?
Not since the last report that I've received.
Which was?
The same one that you and I received at the same time.
Right, which, yep, and they had promised the tax assessor would put them together and, and, um, make it more sortable, right? So, nothing. That was in September. So, and I get that a lot of people have been busy campaigning and stuff and haven't had the time to look at this, but if you do look at the data, um, there are issues here that need to be addressed, and it's very difficult to address them when A, you don't have a full-time assessor. And I'm not putting this on, uh, the finance director or the other folks in the finance department, but the bottom line is, this city has not had a fin, uh, a, a, a tax assessor for several years now, going on three years. And we'll take something up later this evening, um, in connection with compensation for the part-time tax assessor. Um, but it's an issue that needs to be addressed. And, um, relying on the individual that we've been relying on that isn't full-time, you end up with problems like this. And they're serious problems, and there's a backlog. We had, we had an abatement for Navigant Credit Union back in June, and that was approved by the tax assessor, the part-time tax assessor, and the administration would not allow it to come to the city council month after month. We finally brought it before the council in June. And it was, it was as clear-cut as could be. We charged an entity taxes when, in fact, the entity by Rhode Island statute is exempt. It's, this is, it's black and white. They're exempt, yet we charged them taxes. They appealed it, and the administration just dragged their feet, dragged their feet, dragged their feet. So we have this huge backlog. We don't have a tax assessor that shows up in the building. They work from home. Um, they provide, we, we haven't gotten the information. We didn't get the information. We still haven't gotten the information. So, my friends over here, you're going to have, um, you know, this can't be fixed for this fiscal year, but there's going to have to be some work and some, some, some analysis, um, done to understand this and then come up with potential solutions. And there's a number of levers that can be pulled. Um, and I'd be happy to talk to any of you folks individually or otherwise at a later date if, if, if you so wish. But, um, I am not going to listen to the mayor-elect go on the radio and say the problem is because the city council unanimously selected Vision appraisal. It's got nothing to do with that. It's got nothing to do with that. It has everything to do with an administration that does not provide this council or whoever's up here with the information that they need to make fact-based and informed decisions, and it happens all the time. So... So that's that. Second item is, uh, Steve, I'm sorry, Director. I just wanted to touch base on Oak Grove. Have you had any communications with, uh, the developer in terms of his endeavors to get an order of granite?
Yes, we got a confirmation.
Excellent.
Microphone.
Can I just say that I just drove by today, and I'm not sure if that's what it is, but actually took pictures of some granite something, a lot of granite something.
That's the other development. That's, that's phase four, not phase three.
Okay.
That's the frustrating thing, that phase four has granite. Came in after, yeah.
Yeah.
That's been there for a while. Just so everyone's clear, phase four started after phase three. Four comes after three. They have the granite. Three doesn't, and these people have been suffering. So you've got something, Steve? Excellent.
We got something, uh, what's disappointing is, um, the date is eleven-nine-twenty-two. That's the...
But he ordered it. Okay, well, that's, that's a step.
Step in the right direction, but...
Yeah.
Obviously late.
Yep. Okay. Well, you guys will have to decide if you'd pull the trigger on the bond at some point, but if he's, if he's starting to make some progress, who knows? You'll have to ride him like a donkey, so. All right. Thank you, Steve.
Welcome.
Pardon? Yep, and then the last, the last one is Cass Park improvements. Um, again, the, um, I know that there was, I read in the paper where, uh, the group went out and had a look at the Cass Park, and that's excellent. Again, I would just hope that as we move forward, um, there's certainly option A, which is to, uh, mine the gravel out of Cass Park, uh, sell it for some price, and do the upgrades that are contemplated. Option B, uh, from my perspective, is, um, we also had the November two thousand seventeen plan that was approved, that was put together by, uh, Mayor Baldelli-Hunt's administration at the time, um, and approved by the planning board. And I know there's been some modest discussions and disagreements, um, in terms of approach, but I think at, at the very least, we should get a price for resurfacing the existing track and putting in a, either an athletic, uh, uh, synthetic field or grass turf, uh, so we have a clear understanding of what the cost of that approach would be versus mining the gravel, moving the, moving the track, et cetera, and doing that. So at least you have both options to compare. And have, uh, again, have options available to you to select from as opposed to just jumping into one versus the other. I think it wouldn't take a lot of time and effort to get an estimate. And then, Steve, Director, how many, how many yards of gravel are expected to be pulled out of there?
We, uh, we did an estimate of about half a million yards.
Half a million?
Yeah.
I think there's more, but just being conservative.
Okay. And I don't want to pin you down on a price, because I get that you want to...
You can if you want.
Well...
I don't mind being pinned.
No, I don't mean it like that, but I mean, if, if, I still think you need to do an RFP of, of some sort to, and I don't want to, I don't want to tell them what we expect for a price, so they, so they just meet what we're expecting. Let's have real competition, but I don't want to do the whole Kong restaurant all over again, um, and take that approach. Okay, so, so anyway, so that's it. I will, I'll leave it at that, but again, I would hope that we, uh, look at and consider all the options, um, and, um, I'll just leave it at that. So thank you. Appreciate that, Steve.
Twenty-two P forty-five, a request of Albert R. Bopelant to address the city council regarding presentation of the Windsocket Heritage Canal District.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Steve, I wish, uh, we were a few years into the future. We could use that half billion yards to, uh, bring the whole bypass up a few feet for the project. It would work. It would save a lot of money, actually, to get it out of a floodplain about four feet or so. Anyway. There we go. See? Thank you. Thank you to the sitting body, the city council. Thank you to have asked the question. Is a large project feasible for the city of Windsocket? Well, after one year of meetings and brainstorming with this, with this commission, the answer is yes, yes, yes. And at this time, um, we have several other committee members, please stand, just to be recognized. We have Paul Sadis, the architect, professor. We have Mike Dubois for the environmental. We have, um, Luis Rodriguez from, uh, just graduated from Boston Architectural School, and they all work for free. And then we have Pauline Demers. Pauline, where are you, Pauline? That's it. The other five members couldn't make it tonight, so here we are. Thank you for giving your time, and thank you for the city council for allowing us to go out and really do a brainstorming. Um, so here we go. But we have gone further than a feasibility study. Windsocket is getting a plan, an intellectual package, through a developer's eye. First, we had to find the needs of the city, and then the city's assets. The plan was specific to Windsocket and more specific to the inner-city core, keeping a keen eye on one of Rhode Island's worst census tracts. Here, in the project area, the Truman Bypass, exists in the surrounding area, a forty percent poverty rate. It is this forty percent poverty rate that enables and entitles this project to be financially feasible. With an assortment of available tax credits within this zone, it will allow developers the ability to have stackable tax credits. These tax credits are undoubtedly an immense financial lure. In short, this five-hundred-million-dollar project can potentially become a three-hundred-thirty-three-million-dollar funded project through the tax credit process, as well as the ability for Windsocket to have a true market-driven project. At the core of the commission's findings was the center city's poverty rate and lack of a local economy here in the center city. The greatest importance of the commission and the single most paramount endeavor through this process was how this project has the, the potential to uplift the lives of the citizens of Windsocket through tax stabilization, jobs for single mothers, and the inner-city youth, essentially giving the community a second chance. A local microeconomy will be initiated through this process. Parenting on the city's continuum brain drain will be addressed, all while leaving little or no effect on the, on the city's school system. Everybody must be saying like, wow, because we do have these opportunities, and these were questions that we had to answer. So the project will be built around all of these negatives and turn the negatives into a positive for the city, because we have tremendous assets around us and within the city also. We, as a commission, have been ve- very busy. A project that promises to fulfill every need for the city of Windsocket has indeed been in, in undertaking. We have been studious, calculated, sensible, and deliberate as to the needs of Windsocket as a whole. Through doing this, we have searched out the city of Windsocket's greatest assets. Uh, I'm just going to walk over there and just, basically, I'll be right back here. That's what I do. This is a quick overview for the people watching on TV and us.
Luis?
Right here, Robert.
Stand here?
Move the chairs.
Do you want to move these chairs?
Yeah, before we can see the... Move the chairs on the table.
Thank you. Please proceed.
You know, just a little story. A lot of times, people can get to the point that it's tough to get things done in the city to bring new industry, new commerce, et cetera, et cetera. When Susan first took office, I sat with her, and I says, what are your needs for the city? She goes, Albert, two things. I need a hotel in the city, and get rid of River Falls, please. So, I took Gary. I said, Gary Fernandez, you can have it for one dollar. We came over, we saw Susan and Joe Matthews, and the transaction was done within a couple of months. So it can happen, and we see what the building is today. The hotel, Holiday Inn, I purchased it off of, uh, Ford Motor Credit, did the environmental, and did the study, and, uh, a gentleman came and bought it, and, uh, they, we have a Holiday Inn here, and that process was done within a month's time, uh, with, uh, Susan and I. So this project is large, really large, and we can do it together. You know, we have the assets. Everything's here, which I'll talk about in a little. For now, we have the proposed hotel at River Island Park, okay? Over here, the circle that presently exists is what we call Pothier Circle, where the canal starts. It comes down, okay, under the bridge. In phase one, it actually stops under the bridge. In phase two, it begins from the other side, from the north side of Court Street Bridge, over through in the front of the library, and it ends right at Speedy Muffler, okay? So, it's a huge undertaking, and it's going to be a ten-to-fifteen-year project. But as I will show shortly... going to propose a hundred-unit building be raised there to keep the continuity of Depot Square, to make another town center anew like it was. As, as everybody knows, Garrett, you would know, the fill-in the voids of Main Street are extremely important. That's what they want, to have it historically correct. So we're going to move along. So we have the canal, the walkway, and the bike path. The bike path is going to actually go through the canal on the twenty-foot walkway, but they're not going to pedal through, they're going to pedal to. There's a big difference. If you go there right now and you're on a bike, you pedal through. People from all over, from west of the province will be pedaling here, too. If you take a look at the new bikes, you can drive out fifty miles, push the button, and the battery will now take you back home. Drunk or, or what have you, it doesn't matter. The electric way, the green way, is the way that this project is going to go, okay? All along the rooftops of all of the buildings is going to be green, golf, pools, everything. They won't, everything will be geared towards green technology, because the, because the federal grants in regards to that are just enormous. And let me see, right here, then we have the proposed Phase Two, okay? With New Orleans, the Phase Two buildings are going to look more like the French Quarter. So over here, you have the buildings that will mimic all of the mills of the past, because you're walking through history. The second largest sought-after tourism in America, right, is what? The tourism of local communities to sort, to find the history. So people, they don't really travel to Europe, they'd rather just go for local rides, and we have a tremendous history here in the city. Then we have the international gardens, okay? We're all different kind of plants, so people can walk from around the world. And then we have a proposed amphitheater over here, a thirty-five-hundred seat, which, as you know, when we, when we get the shows into the stadium, there is twelve-hundred-and-fifty seat, okay? To get the big acts in, you're going to go at least three thousand or better. So that's important. And if you took a look at East Providence in the past week, what do they do? We got the waterfront, an amphitheater, okay? So we have to be ahead of the curve, so forth and so on. And Luis, just go through a few pictures over here quickly. All right. Here you have the hotel, it's like, uh, Wensocket, all the facades, I'm going to be just like, we're just going to put up a building. Everything will be history-based, okay? Because that's why people are going to come here. Everything has a two-purpose cost. The mills are going to have, the buildings are going to have plaques on it, the towers of all the thirty mills that had since been knocked down and burnt, each building's going to have a tower and tell the history about the people who worked there and what they did there, okay? Next picture. Here you have kind of a shot from the burning street, from the Court Street Bridge. You see the trees are lined along with the hotel in the background. This would be the bypass on both sides, and Allen's Avenue is back here, and is, is very dense, okay? So the buildings are going to be five, six stories high, but with a very dense populace. Over here, interesting, over here, you have the library, okay? You see the water passing in front of the library? That's the canal. This is Harris Square, so we're making the third square. We don't only have Depot Square, we have Pothier Circle, and we have Harris Square, the two most popular men in the city's history, okay? So people along this path will be able to walk to it, and you'll be meeting people here. These are three town squares that we have that brings that sense of community. You know, it's Newport, it's, it's the back Bay, Boston, it's Soho. It's a very intimate gathering here in the center city, okay? And next shot, taking a little ride on a Saturday morning, heading out and everything. Talking to people in Providence, I had my friend Bob Burke. Providence, they did their project in kind of like a rush, okay? Our project, if you take a look at the canal in Providence, we have two, maybe three restaurants. Over here, we're going to have the opportunity of having sixty to eighty restaurants and shops. There's a big difference, because it's planned development. We see the course of actions. And on certain nights, we're going to have water dance, like the Bellagio, the dance will, the water will have pumps that, that will be dancing to music, so people will come on certain nights. And also, we'll have our own version of Water Fire, et cetera. But that's the last picture. I'm going to get back to the mic. Thank you. Now, in regards to the hotel, you know, last week I was out, I was out with someone that understands the tax credit process. And if you look at rebuild Rhode Island and federal tax credits, okay, just on those two, Dubacca credits is thirty-nine percent, and rebuild Rhode Island up to thirty percent, with, with, they can forego also a hundred percent of the cost to build the tax on the goods to get us, so it's actually thirty-seven percent. So something like that, you'd be up to like seventy-five percent funded through the tax credit process. We hear a lot about why large corporations don't pay taxes, because this is what they invested, they don't tell the whole story. They invest in communities like this, people-driven, okay? Uplifting lives. They don't say that, but that's what large corporations do. And that's why we have to get out there, get ahead of the curve, and I think here in Northern Rhode Island, we have tremendous opportunity. Social flatland. Sometimes we take a look at the social flatlands, and we says, "What, what happened?" It happened, the project failed. And now we see on social street, every time everybody drives by, sometimes you want to close your eyes and say, "What the hell has happened to Wensocket?" But the turnaround to that is, we have high-rises, we have Enor Lipit Water View, we have like Chateau Claire. We have about a thousand units just surrounding this zone, okay? A thousand units. And the problem is that we don't have people with income. So when there's no money, there's no opportunity to uplift lives, there's no, there's no money to, to have the ability for people to spend, creating a, a micro market for people to live here. You have, people used to work, live, and play in Wensocket. Now, you go up to CVS, six thousand employees leaving Highland, you just wish more of them would take a right, okay? And sometimes I say, "I wish that they would live here and not work here," because if they take their paycheck here, okay, the thing has to be different. They take their paycheck and live in center city is where we build our market, okay? So that's a very important thing. The other projects will be Pawtucket, Central Falls. We see what their projects are right now. You have a train station that's being built. Central Falls and the mills over there is going to realize, the architect is, is already working on a couple of projects. They're going to be building out a thousand units or so, so they want to have their tremendous multi-hundred-million-dollar deals going. You see the city of Pawtucket, the Tidewater Project is four hundred million, with another hundred fifty to be built out in their downtown. You see Alabro going, if you drive through Alabro and see the superstructures that they're currently building on the seven-mile little canal, is amazing. You see Fall River, their waterfront project, and New Bedford, their one-point-five-billion-dollar project on the waterfront. Every city around us, including East Providence, has a mega-plan going. It's not fiction. It's our tide, the time is now. Otherwise, we're going to fall behind. When Central Falls and Pawtucket turns around, and through the process, you're going to have people working in Boston, living in those communities closest to us, well, the people who will have a lot of income is going to sort us out, because we're not being proactive as a city in renewing it. Just a couple of words that the committee found, I told the whole committee, we all brainstormed. Location, along the mighty Blackstone River, nestled against Old Historic Main Street, center of the valley, CVS, Amica, Citizens Bank Office Park, and Fidelity. Those are people that we're going to be going to. We're not in, we're not in a desert. We have assets here. Tourism, okay? Heritage tourism is the most sought-after tourism in America, that's forty percent of the marketplace. It opens the river through zip lines, running, biking, kayak, fishing, et cetera. It will become a destination point, bike path. We have the theme, the Industrial Revolution. This is going to be told, the story, and this city is going to become the center of America to, to tell that story. The image of the city will be improved, the history of the buildings will be told through the plaques along the whole canal system with the buildings of the Industrial Revolution, the birthplace of it here in Wensocket, largest cotton mill, that was a social mill, largest rubber company, so forth and so on. It will be providence to the city of Wensocket. It will place young professionals that will want to live and work in, in a cool, hip place, a cutting-edge place. Our diversity, there will be monuments along the way to tell the whole story of the city of Wensocket. And very important, thank you to Jim, okay? If this project was built out right now, our tax levy would be to the tune of increase of seventeen-point-three million of new city revenue at full buildout. Today, our commercial rate is, is at thirty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. The project, okay, would currently bring down this commercial rate to eighteen dollars and fifty cents. That's bringing, we have to think about our tax levy in the future to build new schools, et cetera, et cetera. I talked about the microeconomy at full buildout, okay? Currently, right now, on Main Street, we have expendable money of, let's say, three million dollars for people living here in a hundred fifty units, okay? That will increase to two-hundred-ten million through the infusion of young professionals, and we have young professionals all around us. You could take a look at where they're going in Franklin Mass, et cetera, et cetera, okay? Jobs, not only with, with the jobs, but this local area is an enterprise zone. It will give tax incentives for single mothers and inner-city youth. This will uplift the lives of three-hundred-fifty to four-hundred-fifty full and part-time jobs within, within the zone, okay? City will go, city, this is a big positive. The city owns the majority of the land. We have an excellent water, sewer, and fire department. So it's not like we're out in the desert. We have the infrastructure, okay? And this project, undoubtedly, once it gets approved through Phase Two, right, Main Street will be a mecca, so Garrett will be able to sell every building three or four times over. Saying this at the end, a topic that I really didn't want to touch, but I'm going to just touch upon it, and it's, and it's nothing to do with making it personal in any way, but I think it has to be talked about. We have to sometimes look at ourselves, okay? The city should have undergone a brainstorming session years ago. Go to Alton Jones, spend the week there, and just talk about Wensocket. That's what you do through leadership, you got to talk about the big plan, the major plan. And we're not like the old mayors, where they just built. We have a lot of different issues. So here I go. I want to read it, please don't hold it. Keep one thing in mind, I've been dear friends with Charlie Baldelli, Susan Nenard, Francis Lanto, and Mr. Fontaine. They've all been my friends, okay? And they still are my friends. God rest a couple of their souls. Being a friend, they would tell me their intimate stories about what it is to be mayor, and they would share with me their most intimate times, because when someone's my friend, you're, you're my friend all the way around, and people want to open, because I think at times I can help them. The last core finding is that Wensocket has had a continuance of lack of leadership that has persisted for many years. There must be a city turnaround plan that has a vision, if there is any viable hope for the future with true effective change. Although the executive branch is well-intended, they are preoccupied at times themselves with union contracts, budgetary planning, and a slew now of social service issues. When it is time for reelection, they are like a racehorse with blinders, unattending to make the finish line. There is a hurry to pave roads and rebuild parks, and, and all the attempts for votes. I'm not only talking about the current administration, I'm talking about the past thirty-five, forty years that I've been involved, thirty-seven years in this city. So let me get personal. So I end over here. When you're in the frying pan, and the job is above your pay grade, there is no time to push forward a vision of renewal and sustainability. Our first mayors, Grant Pond and Pothier, were dreamers. They dreamed of buildings, of building a beautiful city, and they did. In the Gilded Age, they built anew with private money. During this era, the citizens of Wensocket had the largest savings in the state of Rhode Island, all because they had vision and they planned for the city. In 2013, after virtual bankruptcy, the state left ten million dollars in a slush fund. Fast forward to 2022, the federal government gave us some thirty-six million dollars in upper funds, for a total of forty-six million. Not one dollar has been spent nor earmarked toward the vision of the renewal for the city of Wensocket. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, can I ask Mr.?
Councilman, I mean, Councilman, Director, Agostino.
Yes.
Al, thanks for the presentation.
Yes.
Mind if I call you Al or Mr. Bopelant?
Mr. Albert.
Okay, Mr. Albert. The renderings are, they're beautiful. They're very inviting, and, but my question is, on every project that I've ever worked on, and I've worked on a few, nothing on this magnitude, this is, this is grand, what is the anchor here on this project?
The hotel.
The hotel, okay.
The hotel's the anchor. That has to fly.
Project starts with an anchor, right?
Yes, that's, because it, because it's a hotel conference in banquet, with the conference center between the museum and the hotel will double as an exhibit hall, so we can get the exhibits throughout the world to fly in here, and people come, you know, from a hundred, two hundred miles away to come to an exhibit hall.
So, so the hotel is the anchor, and the incentive is the tax credits and the distressed community, et cetera?
After this, the area will not be distressed. We're going from...
But I'm saying, to bring this potential investor to build this hotel, so who, if not, who will build the hotel? Who will fund it?
Who will fund it? The local corporations will fund it. Here's how that works, okay?
Okay.
You're going to go to the main, to the largest corporations here in Northern Rhode Island, I want to say, we have a project here that we feel that we want to uplift the lives in the, in the center-city core, okay? Build jobs, et cetera. As you know, large corporations like to do that. These are called specialty projects, okay? After that, what happens is that they sign on, and when they sign on, they want to sign on, instead of setting the people to Providence, they want to promise to have do X amount of rooms, rooms on an annual basis, which will give the fight dancing for that... You're going to go to the main, to the largest corporations here in Northern Ireland. I want to say, we have a project here that we feel that we want to uplift the life in the center-city core, okay? Build jobs, et cetera. As you know, large corporations like to do that. These are called specialty projects, okay? After that, what happens is that they sign on. And when they sign on, they want to sign on instead of setting the people to providence, they want to promise to do X amount of rooms on an annual basis, which will give the financing for that project. In other words, if we did a hotel study right now, which I've done several of them, the project wouldn't work. But by getting the main corporations involved and promise to take part, and not only that, part of the tax credit process in there, okay? It's going to be a win-win-win project. As far as the hotel right now, you have the new market credits that will pay for 30, not 39%, okay? And you have Rebuild Rhode Island that will pay for 30% plus 7% of the materials to be bought. So we're at 75% financing. That's not even talking about the opportunity zone. As far as the large corporations paying their capital gains tax after a period of 10, 15 years when they hold for long term. So it's a huge win. The ability is structured. And like I said, if it wasn't for these tax credits, I could not stand here as someone who loves the city of One Socket and sell this. We have a tremendous opportunity over here, okay? And when you're making offers like that to a developer, an intellectual package as we get into Phase Two, believe me, they will be lining up because it's such a win-win-win. It's really second to none. At times, you really even can't believe it. What I'm saying is true, but you can go online, check out the area, what we qualify for, and everything is in place and everything and anything I do, I speak the truth for the city of One Socket. And as far as funding the other end of the project, we can have all of those kind of discussions. But, you know, this is major players. This is, this is when mayors have to go to Boston, Morton Steakhouse, and the Capital Grill to go and cut the deals. Because this is what happens. You've got to leave One Socket, you've got to be introduced to people, and a project like this is going to go from mayor to mayor to mayor, and it's going to be the city's project. But we have to do something. We just can't lay ourselves and say, what happened? You know? We have to do this turnaround, and we need a microeconomy in the center-city to turn this around. These 1,500 units are going to be absolutely incredible. It's so easy to be short-sighted, okay? To look, statesmen look to the following generations to leave something behind, you As a city, we have to look internally and look at ourselves. To be a city councilor, you can come here and sit, budget, it's like a robot every year. Yep, I'm going to be a city councilor. What's exciting? What's new? What's happening? You know? With a project like this, there's a lot to fight for. You've got to be a leader. You've got to fight for it. You want it? Fight for it. Because there's seven other cities right around us right now, but they're all fighting. And you know what? Their dream is, but it's happening right now. And as you looked at Tidewater when they were short on money, the governor, oop, abracadabra, came up with 40 million. Why? Because Pawtucket has a plan. When we don't have a plan, we're not even in the game. The federal government tomorrow can come out, shovel-ready projects, okay? Let's go. New roads, new infrastructure, everything. If we were two, three years into it, we would say, oh, let's take opportunity here. Let's get 100% funding. We're not, we have no options. We just go like this with blinders, and we have to become broad thinkers now, okay? Broad thinkers like Pond, like Grant, like Pothier, and yes, like your grandfather, the greatest, David Susie, his grandfather, from 20 to 25, had the greatest building boom in the city's history alongside with Governor Pothier at the time. So this mayor knows the governor well, too. So who knows, right? We could do some positive stuff. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Wood. Thank you.
Any other questions from the members of the council? Very none. Thank you, Mr. Boepland, for your efforts.
Yes, thank you. She said that we have 202 people that are on Facebook site right now. So that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, and God bless.
Much for your time, your effort, your, the work of the council members, Sierra and Gillette, who worked with you. Thank you to them, and thank you to all the people who participated. You put a lot of effort into it, and we appreciate that.
22P46, a request of public works directed to address the city council regarding Veolia.
Did you receive the communication from Veolia?
No. Did we receive a communication?
Yeah, it's attached to Steve's.
It's on the docket.
Oh, it's part of the report, okay.
It's Steve's request.
Yes, okay.
Solicitor?
Sorry.
Yes?
Still with us? You have any questions for the solicitor in regards to this communication? This is simply just Veolia communicating that they acquired Suez and the O and M of the new water treatment plant is going to stay the same. So before I sign off, we sign off. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's the director and Solicitor Deesabon. I would ask for, if you don't mind, a, an org chart, a legal entity org chart of the current state versus the new state that they're proposing. I know they say there's no, no change to the financial condition, et cetera, but you've got a bunch of legal entities here that are getting reorg'd and potentially pushed further down the chain, and they could fall under, you know, some highly-levered legal entity within their org structure. So I would ask for, very simply, I'll be happy to send an email tomorrow to follow up, but before you agree to this, I would ask for a copy of their legal entity org chart before and after the reorg that they're proposing and highlight exactly where this guarantor entity is in the org structure. And then separately, we should look at, and I'll be happy to look. I do want to go, I'm assuming there are, you know, Veolia's a public company. I want to look at their 10K filings to see if they, because they always have the major entities in there as well. There's probably nothing, there's probably no issue here, but we just need to do a little bit more diligence, in my view, beyond them just simply saying there'll be no, there'll be no financial impact to the entity. Because again, they could shove this entity down under some dog, if you will, within their legal structure, so.
Right, and that makes perfect sense, Councilman.
Thank you for that. It's high level.
22P47, request of President Ward to address the following items. One, comments made by Mayor-elect Lisa Baldelli-Hunt regarding revaluation process, vendor selection, and related problems.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Like Councilman Canoyer, I was not pleased to hear the mayor lay off blame for any problems associated with values and tax bills of city residents, especially associated with the multifamily apartment units, claiming that it had to do with the choice of Vision over Northeast in performing a statistical revaluation, I might add, a statistical revaluation, which is a crunching of data having nothing to do with physical inspections of property. They take data on comparable sales, on trends in the market, and they revalue properties according to that. For the record, back in 2020, we awarded the contract to Vision Government Solutions as opposed to Northeast Revaluation Group at a cost of $175,000 against Northeast, $128,000. And I can tell you that part of the reason that I voted among all of the others on the council, as we voted unanimously on this, was because I had had some personal experience in the town of Lincoln with Northeast on another matter. And the highly skilled, excellent tax assessor there was most frustrated with their performance. And so I conveyed that to the council, and after discussion, they agreed with me, and we chose not to use Northeast. Now, what did we get for Northeast back when we did the revaluation in 2017, the full revaluation, which they did? Well, out of that, we had a series of properties that ended up appealing, and I'm not, it's not to say that property owners don't appeal regularly, they do. There's just, probably just as many appeals going on now related to this new valuation because they happen every cycle. However, for the record, in the revaluation done in 2017, we ended up, since then, related to that valuation and subsequent years, while under those valuations, we ended up with real property tax abatements of $309,000, $309,850 actually. So we spent, what did I say? $47,000 to avoid the kind of situation that got us property abatements of $309,000. And then we had two other properties that were litigated that we ended up abating taxes of $398,000. So we're up close, we're over $700,000 already of taxes that were billed that we had to rebate or reduce future taxes. Then we had the error of billing a tax-exempt property not related to the revaluation for $90,000 with no notification given. And then we had, now, again, we only had $700,000 of abatements. Now, I'm assuming that the new valuations were sent out. I seriously doubt we're going to end up abating $700,000 on the properties that are being appealed now. But on top of that, the tax assessor, and I'm saying the tax assessor only because I don't know who else would have been responsible, as I said, chose without notice to bill tax-exempt organizations for $86,700, simply because they, they didn't seem to meet the standards for which you would consider the property used or on the market. And we ended up abating it, and frankly, it led to an ordinance that we passed ordering that a tax assessor cannot simply deny an appeal without any notification. Now, under state law, they can. They can deny an appeal simply by ignoring it with no notification of the fact that they've denied it and no notification to the taxpayer of what their rights are under the law. It becomes the taxpayer's burden to know that. I don't think that's fair. We passed an ordinance, this council, I believe unanimously, that requires now the tax assessor to notify appellants in writing that they have been denied. And in doing so, they're also required to apprise them of their rights for appeal further to the Board of Assessment Review or subsequently to the Superior Court. Now, on top of all of that, we had, oh, by the way, these are all the property abatements that we went through over the last few years that we had to take care of through resolutions. On top of that, there were tangible tax appeals and litigation that has led to, meaning that tangible property taxes, which are self-disclosed by the companies, were billed amounts either greater than what they disclosed or based on estimates, and we have subsequently had to abate $436,000 related to those tangible properties. On top of that, we have a lawsuit currently pending with Narragansett Electric and Narragansett for the gas company properties. Those properties are the utility properties, basically. They were valued above what they disclosed or claimed in their filings, which they did every year. And those filings are done based upon prescribed cost methods and depreciation. And the depreciation, I believe, is defined in the state statutes as to how they depreciate certain types of property. But apparently, the tax assessor, despite those filings, assigned a much higher value. And Narragansett Electric went to the Board of Assessment Review to appeal, and the Assessment Board, Review Board instructed the assessor to provide the explanation as to why their value was higher than they produced in their documentation, their record. And to this day, that explanation has never been provided to them, and they're in Superior Court now, and we're paying attorneys to defend the city. If, if they win this argument, that would cost us an additional $1.1 million of tax That's a lot of money, folks. And of that $700,000 is directly related to the $47,000 we decided to pay more to hopefully avoid this kind of thing. So a quick look tells me that we're close to $2 million of tax abatements in the last four years. Now, I went to the Tax Assessment Board of Review meeting record in the Secretary of State's site because when my brother served on that board, he complained that the assessor never came to the hearings. I checked with other assessors, and I said, do you generally go to the appeal hearings before the board? And the answer was, yes, of course, we go there to defend. But of course, I was dealing with a tax assessor who always notified in writing whether or not, when they were denied, and apprised them of their rights for appeal. And so when there was an Assessment Board hearing, Assessment Review Board hearing, rather, the tax assessor would appear every time to defend the position of the town on the assessment and why they felt she felt that it should be denied. In our case, in three, six, 10, 10 meetings of the Assessment Review Board since 2018, the assessor has appeared at two of those meetings. And that was one of the frustrations expressed to me was that the assessor wasn't showing up to defend the city's position, and so they were abating and granting valuation adjustments that the assessor expressed objection to without ever actually saying why they were denied, and then without ever actually appearing before the review board to defend the position. Finally, at two meetings, the assessor did show up. So we have had a history with evaluations, I think, with Northeast that were more than sufficient reason to contract with Vision, who has done the job. And as I said, there will be appeals associated with that related to, I'm sure, some of this multifamily housing and probably some others. But I seriously doubt that we're going to be at risk of almost $2 million of tax abatements associated with new revaluations that were done in 2021. It's, frankly, I'm a bit offended that the, that former mayor, Mayor-elect Lisa Baldelli-Hunt would get on the radio and try to blame this council. As Councilman Canoyer pointed out, we were not part of the process of evaluating the data, the results, the values, the rates, seeing how things could be adjusted to make things work more equitably, less painfully. And I think of a couple of situations in my capacity as a finance director. No, I'm not a tax assessor, but I know a lot about tax assessing because I had a tax assessor work under me for the last 17 years, and we've had many discussions. And every time we go through a revaluation cycle, we would sit with the town administrator, and we would review the rates, the values, the structure of the whole thing, and we would work out what we thought was in the best interests of the town people in general without having harm caused to any one class of property. Sometimes it was a little painful, but we explained it to people. When I was a council president, back in the before time, I'll call it, before 2013, we would have meetings, and I think Councilman Gendron, Mayor Gendron, Council President Gendron, whatever other title you've had. You sat in those meetings where we talked about the assessed values. We talked about the rates. We talked about the homestead exemption. We talked about ways to manage it because it was important that the council participate in the discussion with the administration about what was coming when we did our budget, what was coming when the taxpayers got a bill, so that we would know how we could manage that process to the best interests of all of the people who live and own property in the city. And that's not what happened here, and it's not happened here since I've been back on the council at all. We have a budget thrown at us with tax rates. We try to manage the budget, make budget amendments. They affect the tax rate, but no one's ever talked to us and made plans for. They affect the tax rate, but no one's ever talked to us and made plans for adjustments or consideration of adjustments for rates or homestead exemptions or any other kinds of credits. It's just something that's put before you at the last minute, and you scramble, and you make adjustments. But please, Mayor, not you, do not get on the radio and start accusing this council of being the group to blame for the problem. Here's the problem, right here on this little piece of paper. We had a tax assessor up through December of 2015, Arthur Bouchard. He retired. He's been working for us practically ever since, per diem, subject to his 75-day rule in whatever capacity he can, and I'm thankful that he does contribute to our, to the work that needs to get done. And then we had Elise Perry, who was our tax assessor from 2015 to 2019, and then left in September of 2019 to go to the city of Providence. Now, the mayor characterized it as something to do with being bullied or harassed or something from members of this council. Not that I'm looking at anyone in particular, never mind, as being bullied by members of this council. Asking questions is not bullying. Asking questions and expecting answers is not unfair. We're participants in the governance of this city, and when we have questions that are legitimate about what's going on, especially when it comes to tax values, tax rates, and tax bills, we're entitled to get the information so that we can make decisions in an informed way. She left to go to Providence because there was more money there. She has still worked for us part-time while she was working full-time in Providence, and she's worked in Providence through November of 2021, and she has not worked there. But since September of 2019, we have gone through three, three tax assessors? Is it three? Three, right? We had the retired gentleman from East Providence who stayed a few months and gave it up and left. And then we had Mary Blair, who came in for less than two months. And as a matter of fact, interestingly, one of the reasons she was shown the door had to do with not willing, being willing to sign a tax roll that had information that she knew to be incorrect, and among them was the taxation of navigant for tangible property even though they're exempt. The tax assessor's office was informed they're exempt, and yet, they were still taxed and sent a bill again for three years, and we ended up abating it because they're not taxable for tangible property according to our own law. And despite being informed of that, the letter to abate was sat, was sat on the table even though Ms. Blair told them, "I can't sign a tax roll that has bad information in it that I know is an illegal taxation," and was summarily dismissed from the job as a result of demanding that she be allowed to only sign a tax roll that was legal. And we ultimately had to abate that, but it took three years before we did it. And then we had another tax assessor who came in that I'd been asked about, and I realized, I think, that assessor worked for us for two days?
Two, maybe two weeks.
Oh, two weeks. Oh, I thought it was two days. Maybe took a look around, saw what was going on, and chose to go somewhere else, wherever that is. So, oh, and then we had another tax assessor who applied, was being considered, and then withdrew application. And I had the opportunity to speak with him, and he made it clear to me why, and it's the same reason as the other three tax assessors are not here. We have a problem. We have a problem because we have no tax assessor working for us full-time. You cannot operate a city without a tax assessor, but if a tax assessor is going to work in a hostile environment where they're ordered what to do, like increasing taxes, tangible taxes on a utility without justification, we will never have a tax assessor, and somebody's going to have to intercede at some point and do something. I've got a pile of data there about things that have gone wrong, and to be blamed for hiring Vision as the sole reason for all of these problems is so distorted from reality it makes you wonder about somebody who would say something like that, because it has no foundation in the truth. It was our attempt to avoid a second round of the million dollars of abatements we had to do over the last four years. Makes great PR if you're on a campaign. Oh, by the way, the campaign was over by the time she said this on the radio, so I don't know why she continued to campaign, because we're here for the next two years. And I'm not saying this to start a fight. I'm saying this because you need to know that this is the reality of what's happened, and we sought to avoid it, and so we did what we thought was right, and I stand by it, and I'll keep the data in case we want to have a conversation later. But I don't know how we're going to resolve it because I don't know how we're going to get someone to come in here to be a tax assessor. My next item.
Council, Council President, before we move on, may I just ask one question related to that subject, Solicitor? Council President just went through a litany of tax appeals and abatements of astronomical numbers. To my understanding, there are still over 100 appeals that are pending that aren't even incorporated in his numbers, over 100 appeals relating to the last three years under Northeast. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know what the Council President has in front of him.
What he has and what he talked about are abatements that we've issued.
Right.
My understanding, there's still over 100 that need to be processed and be brought before the Board of Assessment Review. So, there's still a whole host of appeals from the Northeast reval era. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I've notified everyone of this.
No, I know. You mentioned it was like 104 or something, but.
I think it's probably 120. I'm not sure exactly.
It's over 100.
Well, over 100.
Yeah, okay.
I'm glad you triggered this because it just reminded me, it wasn't just the cost of the abatements, it's the cost of the attorneys. I almost forgot that. So, I looked up the attorney that was dealing with the Narragansett Electric and Gas Company appeal against the Law Department reports, and that particular attorney, Michael McElroy, who's very good at what he does, handled four cases for us, Chateau Claire, I'm sorry, five cases. One among them was Wallen Hill that we did a rather large abatement, and then three other smaller ones, and then the big one, the Narragansett Electric Company. So, for those five cases that put us at risk of a million and a half dollars maybe, we have paid over the course of the last three years, fiscal year '20, '21, and '22, we have paid Michael McElroy $142,000 to defend the city on matters that we have lost or is still in court. And I'm sure if Narragansett Electric's involved, we have much more to pay him if we're going to be litigating that one. Solicitor.
If I may, most of those cases that Mr. McElroy is on, who does a fantastic job, I know him well, they predated me, some of those cases. So, they've been ongoing because when a tax, when you do a tax appeal, let's say you have an appeal this year, you have to do it next year in the year, you have to keep appealing the taxes to keep it current. So, that firm has had those accounts.
Oh, no, I'm only talking about those the last three years. I know there were many more before, and he's been working for us ever since. We had him on 2013 and before when we were doing assessments of properties, whether or not they were taxable and such, so he's been on for quite some time.
Yeah, and as far as the legal expenses, when I came on board, I required all outside attorneys to only get $2.25 an hour, which was not the case prior to that. Some were making $3.50 and whatever, but all attorneys that I hired were $2.25 an hour.
Thank you. And now, on top of all of that, this, this council and other councils before have worked to settle on what's considered pilot agreements with some of the nonprofits in the city, Sir Galore, Club Lafayette, Par X, the Elks Club, St. Joseph's Fetter, et cetera, et cetera. And those were done under agreements that cycled through every three years, I believe. And I noticed in looking through the tax information on the city's website that the last billing for them was the 2021 bill. And in fact, we don't have an agreement with any of them any longer because they expired, and they were not billed for 2022. Is that correct?
I believe it is, and coincidentally, I had a conversation with Elise Perry today, and I believe on the next meeting we'll have a list of agreements for the council to decide on. That would be the social clubs and things of that nature. I forget how many it is, but Elise is working on it.
Looks like it's about a dozen.
I think it's like 20 or 16.
Okay, well, that's good to know, because it was, again, and I can't even say that it's because of Elise Perry. All I can say is, we don't have a full-time tax assessor here, and that lack of a tax assessor is one of the reasons this thing can get skipped over.
Yeah, and the truth is, without someone working full-time, some of these aspects come up, some of these issues come up because there's no one there full-time.
No one to answer the question.
Yeah, there's no one there, so, but luckily, Elise did pick up on it, but she only works 16 hours a week.
Correct. And she's not here often doing it, she's.
She does it from home, yes.
Right. So, so you can't just run to the file to look something up. You are at a disadvantage. So, I'll quickly cover the pilot, the water-serving bill status. I know we're doing the water billing. My only thought was that we, so for the public's information, what are our deadlines going to be if we know them so that people will know that the bill's coming and when they're going to be due to pay it?
So, we've been told, how many times have we been promised and guaranteed that the tax bill rolls would be ready? We have at this point set, if everything continues along this line, we've set a deadline, a payment due date of December 30th. So, that would give a little bit of extra time if the bills come out on time, but Director, did you have any conversation with them today?
So, I did speak to the Water Department. They, they had, the printer had some problems getting the samples out, but I did see them emailed at the end of the day today. So, then, once the Water Department has a chance to review the samples, as long as everything's okay, which we hope it is, well, hopefully, they'll be mailed out next week.
And hopefully, it will develop into a system being functional for the future? Is that, I mean, is that really where the goal obviously must be?
Right, I think we're probably going to have to start another billing cycle rather quickly.
Immediately, yes. But I'm talking about the software and the data uploads and the integrations becoming functional? The problem is coming to a resolution?
There's, there's issues, there's issues, but the goal is to get the bills out and they'll be in collections.
Right now, Council President, we're just looking at these bills, trying to, because they're already going to be seven-month bills, so they're going to be larger than people are used to. The next steps will be addressed as soon as these bills are printed, we're going to have to start the next billing cycle. And it will, the next billing cycle will be done with the same software vendor as we're using now, and we'll get through that the best way we can see fit.
Okay. That being said, I will finish with just saying I want to wish everybody in the city and everywhere a happy, healthy Thanksgiving, and enjoy the Patriots-Viking games Thursday night. Moving on, unfinished business.
2206, the amendment of Chapter 15 entitled Parks Recreation of the Code of Ordinances.
Motion approved, Jim. Motion to approve, Councilman Canoia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Discussion, hearing on roll call.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
President Ward?
Yes, and the ordinance passes for the second time.
22062, ordinance and amendment of Chapter 2 entitled Administration of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wensocket pertaining to tax exemption for the elderly.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Discussion, hearing on roll call.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
President Ward?
Yes.
22063, renaming Florence Drive as Mayor Susan D. Menard Memorial Drive.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilman Canoia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Susie. Any discussion? Hearing on roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
President Ward?
Yes. 22062 and 22063 have been approved. New business.
22064, authorizing the mayor to negotiate and bargain collectively with Local 732 International Association of Firefighters, FL-CIO.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilman Canoia, seconded by the Chair, Council President. Discussion.
Council President?
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
So, I guess I'm just trying to understand why even getting this on the docket when there's only 15 days left with this current council and the administration. I did have a conversation today with Scott Smith, the union president, and, and I spoke with the chief, was just wondering, you know, where, what did they feel about this agenda item? And they both feel that everything's so far apart, you know, in, in the negotiation. They don't see how in 15 days we would be able to ratify, you know, a contract, and since we have a new administration coming in and pretty much a new council, I don't see why we would start negotiating something that it would not be completed prior to, you know, the changes.
This is not, this doesn't cover just 15 days. This is whoever the mayor is. So, a new mayor comes in on December 7th, this is an ordinance, it'll still apply.
So, is the intent that we're going to start negotiating prior to the new administration?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. It's, it's to avoid the nonsense we had previously, so it's very clear that the mayor will take the lead on the negotiations so there's no confusion like we had the last time. That's all. And this, and again, this, this survives this council, it applies to whoever the mayor is.
So, is the, I guess the question is, is the intent to, are there any meetings or anything that is looking to be scheduled prior? I just don't want to begin a conversation, you know, and start, you know, some negotiations that, you know, you might reach even some agreements or whatever, and then, you know, you have a new council and a new administration, it's almost like starting all over again. It just seems like a waste of time.
Let me clear this up. The reason I wrote this is because by law, the council is the authority here to negotiate contracts, because by law, in the state statute, the definitions say that corporate authorities, which are the people who are authorized to negotiate contracts, means the officials within the city or town whose duty or duties it is to establish wages, salaries, rates of pay, et cetera. The city charter under ordinances says that one of the points, one of the reasons that an ordinance is required is to establish compensation for the city. So, we are the corporate authority by state law because we set wages and salaries for the city, so the job to do the negotiation is on us. And unless we designate someone else to negotiate on our behalf, then it falls upon the council to do the negotiation. So, what this does is the same thing that was done in 2005 and '08 and should have been taking place ever since the Budget Commission was dissolved, which was to establish the authority to negotiate on behalf of the city council. And all this does, because the mayor has already been negotiating with the firefighters, Mayor Baldelli-Hunt before that negotiated without a written authority from the council to negotiate on our behalf, but it should have been done. What this does simply is to say that the mayor, whether now or after December 7th, is authorized to do that negotiation. It has nothing to do with concluding the negotiation, it has nothing to do with what being discussed or settled, it's simply to authorize the mayor to do the negotiation, and then when the negotiation is completed and there's a tentative agreement, because we set rates of pay and compensation, the mayor will bring the contract to the council, the tentative agreement, to the council, whether this council or the next, and will explain all of the modifications. explain all of the modifications that are proposed in the tentative agreement and the financial implications of the new rates of pay and other things that are in that contract. And then we will hold a public hearing in accordance with our local ordinance, and then we will ratify the contract. And so we will have a properly negotiated, legally negotiated, properly discussed and ratified contract for our representative as a designated in this ordinance to sign, and then we can move on. It has nothing to do with timing of the negotiation or the conclusion of the negotiation, and it does not necessarily promote something happening before December the 6th or after. It's simply a legal obligation we have, and even if you waited till December the 6th or the week after, the meeting after that, it is still the responsibility of the council to delegate that authority if they choose to someone to negotiate on behalf of the council. It is simply not the authority of the mayor unilaterally to negotiate contracts. And all this is doing is allowing that negotiation to continue legally, as is described in the state statute and our local code of, uh, charter and code of ordinances. That's it.
So, President, I have a question. So, excuse me, I am, just settle down, please, Jesus. Pardon me, pardon me.
Hey, Charlie, that's enough. He's gonna use the microphone.
Mr. President, are we saying that since 2008, you said that was the last time that there was an actual ordinance that gave the authority to the...
Yes.
So what have we done for the last...
What went wrong here was that we had a Budget Commission. And when the Budget Commission came in, they assumed all responsibility for negotiating the contracts, and they did not designate authority to someone else, it was negotiated by the designee of the Budget Commission. And so, this became a non-factor. This structure went away because of the Budget Commission. And when the Budget Commission was retired in 2015, the next contract negotiation, which I don't think happened until probably 2018, should have had this kind of authority process begun again. And I think it's only because we got away from it that we didn't get back to it, and there was a presumption that the mayor simply negotiates contracts, because they're even saying it on statewide radio, that of course mayors negotiate contracts. Well, they don't. They negotiate contracts on behalf of the city or town council that has the authority to set the wages in every community. And so, yes, it was overlooked and should not have been missed, but it was, and these things happen. But the assumption that the mayor negotiates contracts is false. This is the legal structure. The council negotiates because by charter, we set compensation, and as a result, we get to designate who we choose, and it is 100 times out of 100 that they choose to designate the mayor to negotiate, but technically, we can negotiate the Public Safety Director to negotiate on our behalf. Technically, we can designate specifically the solicitor. It's the council's choice to do that. It's just that by default, it has always been the mayor, and this does very little more than replicate what was done, and I say 2005 and '08, I only came on the council in 2005, and I only have the record available to me back, online, back to 2005. But I promise you, it was every cycle that they were negotiating contracts, it was a standard practice that the council would vote to authorize the mayor to negotiate the contracts on behalf of the council. And so, that's all this does.
Council President, I'm sorry, what have you done, David?
I'm good.
So, just, just to perhaps put your mind at ease, this is nothing more than housekeeping, number one. It's an ordinance, so guess what? It requires second passage, which will happen on December 6th. So nothing can happen, it's not like it's gonna preclude the next administration or kinda do something in advance of the next administration, because again, this doesn't, this doesn't take effect until the next, doesn't take effect until December 6th, and then, as you know, you have to have, even if something got negotiated in the next two and a half weeks or fifteen days...
The 6th or the 5th, I'm sorry.
It's, I'm sorry, the 5th, you're right, the 5th, and then, and then the new administration comes in, I believe, the 7th. But even then, so it doesn't become effective till December 5th, but then you have to have a public hearing that has to be advertised in advance, et cetera, et cetera, to even do anything. So this is, it's really form over substance, it's just really housecleaning so that we avoid the confusion that we had before, and as Councilman Ward said, when the Budget Commission was here, they did five-year contracts through 2019, not 2018. So it was really like the police contract, we did one contract, it was 20, the one that was for 2020, that was done without the resolution, or the ordinance, rather, so...
So, I just have one question. So you said, I thought Council President had said 2015, so my question is, since after the Budget Commission, have we been illegally passing contracts or negotiating contracts if we're not following the law of the ordinance?
No, I think, I wouldn't say that. We were overlooking the responsibility to assign that duty, however, we override that failure by actually ratifying the contract. So even though there was a mistake made by a council ratifying a contract, you are by default saying, without knowing it, you're saying, even though we failed to do this action, we agree with the terms that are put before us, so we're going to ratify the contract. So the ratification overrides what we failed to do as a formality. It, to me, it was just a mistake, an oversight, and because of the discussion that occurred a few months ago about who has the authority to negotiate contracts, what I said then, and what I'm saying again, is that it's, it's important that we follow this process so that people understand what their role is and how the authority moves from body to body, and gets us through the circle of the council saying, okay, go negotiate the contract, they go negotiate it, they bring it back, we discuss it, we agree to it, we have a public hearing, we ratify it, and we have a contract. So it's a process that is actually something that assures that going into negotiation, the council is aware that it's going to happen. Through the negotiation, we should be meeting to discuss the terms that are being discussed. At the point of a tentative agreement, the council should meet with the administration to go over it, review it, and make sure we're comfortable with all the aspects of it, in the majority, not necessarily unanimously, and then we let the public know what's going on, we get a fiscal impact statement to them, and then we vote to ratify the contract. That's the process, start to finish, and I'm just trying to initiate the process because the mayor started negotiating with the firefighters, and again, it was another chance where this process could be overlooked, and I think it's important for the public to understand the point we were trying to make several months ago about the issues associated with the police contract and the fact that we failed to recognize our responsibility, and it became assumed that it was simply the mayor's job to negotiate contracts, period, and that's simply not the case. This is what the law states, and this is really all I'm trying to do, is avoid the problem of us not really initiating and participating in the process that comes full circle with a ratification. That's all. It's not, there's no hostility here, there's no attempt to gotcha, it's simply trying to make sure that we do things in accordance with the state statutes, our charter, and our local ordinance.
One last question?
Yeah.
So just to be clear, so then, with this passage, and if it went to the second, there are to be no negotiations between, till after the 5th or the 6th?
Technically, the negotiation should stop, yes.
Yeah, so there are to be no negotiations until after the 6th?
And it was the fact that we had the meeting and that conversation, I think, that triggered in my mind that, hey, wait a minute, we're falling into the trap we went into before, and we should avoid that.
Okay.
We really should. If we want to do this procedurally according to the laws, we should do this, and then let everything take place, and it'll take place, likely it'll take place after the mayor is back in office, and she will be authorized by this to go into the room and negotiate with the firefighters, as it has always been in the past.
Council President?
Oh, yes.
So Councilwoman Gonzalez, I'm not sure what set you off with this.
Well, what's that?
No, no, but let me finish. I did not hide the fact that I was actively negotiating with the firefighters. I called a meeting to let you, the city council, know where those negotiations stood. There was nothing secretive, there was nothing done behind your back. I was actively negotiating in good faith with the firefighters' union, with the excellent leadership of Solicitor De Simone. I brought that to you at the last regular meeting, nobody offered any concern of what I brought to you when I had that meeting, that I called to tell you where those negotiations stood. The council president came to me with a concern, saying that we should pass an ordinance to authorize the mayor. And as Councilman Canoia pointed out, which anybody should have understood by simply reading this ordinance, it will not take effect until December 6th. So I don't know where the problem is, but I hope that we don't stall government any longer. This is an attempt to prepare things to continue to move forward, even as the transition, as smooth as we're trying to make it, is not held up any longer. This does not change anything for this administration. And I hope that we don't do this, we have two meetings left. I hope this isn't what we're gonna do and think that there's, there's background to everything that's happening. Council President Ward realized an error that was made. As you said, you spoke to the fire department, you spoke to the union president, and I would suggest to you that you be very careful, because when Councilman Canoia spoke to a fireman, I mean, a policeman, he was then accused of negotiating that contract. So when you said you spoke to the chief, and you spoke to the council, to the union president, I would be very careful, because the next thing that's gonna happen is somebody's gonna accuse you of negotiating the fire contract. And as this ordinance points out, you're not authorized to do that, so be very careful, because some people perceive a communication, a discussion, all well-good-intended, as negotiations. So I don't think there's any more to this, and I think we're making much more of it.
I would like to respond, Council President.
Yes.
First of all, I don't, I wasn't insinuating any backhanded conversations or anything. The only reason why this conversation is even happening is because this was put in the agenda after the conversations that we have had. The conversation I had with both the union president and with the chief, none of them resulted in any language changes or numbers or any, anything that, that would be even construed as negotiations after the conversations that happened previously. And I don't know, until this point, honestly, I don't even know who negotiated the last contract, because we know Mayor Lisa Baldelli-Hunt didn't do it, we know that the solicitor actually said, "I don't negotiate, I just bring forward whatever the council or whatever, you know, the mayor says." And then, in a couple of meetings ago, both Councilman Canoia and Councilman Ward said, "We didn't negotiate." So at this point, nobody's taking credit for negotiating a contract that has already been ratified, you know, so it's not that, you know, but out of those conversations, there were numbers, there were figures, there were percentages that came out. My conversation was only about the agenda item, that has nothing to do with negotiations. There's no numbers, there's nothing that has to do with anything that has to do with any contract, except the fact that we only have fifteen days. And I know you began some of the negotiations because you did share it with us, and we do appreciate that. So I don't want you to think that this was a backhanded thing or anything like that, it's just when I saw this, I'm going like, wait a minute, I know there's some conversations that have already started, and now we have this on the agenda, you know, and I want to make sure that we don't continue. Obviously, the last conversations didn't result in, in what was expected, so to continue conversations with a new council and a new administration coming, it just be, it just looked like a moot point. So that's all it is, is nothing personal, is nothing looking for backhanded things or, is none of that, it's just what it is.
Council President?
Councilman Canoia.
Just to beat a dead horse, horse to death. Now, to answer your question about who negotiated the police contract, it was the solicitor. What he said was, he, as the solicitor, isn't authorized to negotiate anything with the council unless, I mean, with the, with the union, unless someone gives him clear direction about what to negotiate about. So what we did is we provided the solicitor with a proposal. He then went to the union and had the back and forth of the union and finalized it. So there's a difference. He said, previously, when there were allegations that the police contract took as long as it did, there were suggestions that it was somehow his fault, and what he was explaining was, no, it wasn't my fault, nobody ever gave me clear direction as to what we can negotiate, because he is not authorized to come up with compensation or language changes. As the council president very clearly stated, it's this council that approves compensation. So what we did, after hearing lots of discussion amongst lots of people, including the mayor-elect, who at the time was the mayor, the Public Safety Director, the solicitor, et cetera, we put together a proposal, and we authorized the solicitor to go do his job and negotiate. He brought it to the union president and the negotiating team of the union, he had some back and forth, I guess, and then they accepted it, so that's where we are, but that's water under the bridge, I think we should just pass this and move on.
And Council President, if I could, just to, just to reinforce what Councilman Canoia just said, yeah, I negotiate the contracts, but I need the authority to negotiate, I can't go in there and say, well, I'll give you 3% or 2%, someone has to tell me you have this amount of authority. So I think that's what the council is saying, and maybe that's where you had a miscommunication with what I said previously. In terms of who has authority to negotiate, I always knew that the council had authority to negotiate. I always knew about the statutes, I knew about the corporate authority. That's why when it came time with the police contract, there was never any question in my mind that the council could pass an ordinance, tell me what they wanted to offer, and we could do it. So, these aren't new things to me. But suffice to say, when you, whoever's going to negotiate the fire department contract going forward, they'll still need certain boundaries, guardrails, before they can negotiate. That's, that's what I was trying to say, and I think that's what Jim said pretty clearly. And this, and this, by the way, doesn't affect anything, because it won't take effect until December 6th, and the new administration comes in the next day, and if there wasn't an agreement, you'd have to have it ratified with a public hearing, so there's absolutely no hidden agenda with this resolution. Protocol, you could have it, but all the contracts that we did, the council knew about them, they were briefed on them, and then they ultimately ratified, and so they viciated it anyway. But it's still a good formality to do, because in this city, sometimes you have, you know, disputes between the council and the mayor, maybe it's a, it's a thing here, but this just is a housekeeping matter, and I know everyone's hunky-dory right now, but you never know in six months what could happen, so it's good that you pass it now. That's it.
Council President, could I just add?
Oh, yes.
No, I'm just happy Councilwoman Gonzalez had this conversation, because I just needed some explanation on it also, I probably failed to check with the mayor, Dan Gendron, and you people, so I think it was, it was a healthy conversation, and I'm glad she brought it up, because, you know, the police, the fire chief did have some questions, and I didn't have those answers, and so I'm glad she brought that up, thank you.
And I'll just, if I can, finish with this, because I did send this out at 6:30 in the morning on Wednesday last week, because we have deadlines for submitting legislation, and I did ask the clerk to share it with the rest of the council, to see if they were interested in cosponsoring, and Councilman Canoia cosponsored. And I can appreciate, Councilwoman, that you contacted the union leader and the fire And I guess I didn't get the benefit of one of those conversations until the meeting. I suppose I could have explained all of this over the phone, but frankly, I think I'm pleased now that we've had this discussion publicly and for the public to digest, and for the new council... for the new council members who will be coming in to understand the arguments, the laws, and the implications of this, and the fact that, in fact, the new administration will be the one negotiating, and that this will be done in the proper fashion, according to the law. And that's all I was after. And I hope we can pass this and move on. With that, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
President Ward?
Yes. And the ordinance passes for the first time.
22065, providing family healthcare coverage to part-time tax assessor Elise Parry.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Susie. Discussion.
I just have a question. I'm wondering why this was on the agenda today. I thought she already had.
Yes, but if you read the ordinance, you'll note that she had the benefit, but is not allowed to have the benefit by our code of ordinances. You have to work for the city 30 hours a week. And so she was receiving the benefit without authority. What the attempt here is, because council sets ordinances, I believe, and maybe the solicitor can correct me if I'm wrong, but the only body that can waive the effect of an ordinance is the council that passed the ordinance. And so you can't grant benefits as a compensation package to a part-time employee not fulfilling the 30-hour obligation without coming to the council. And Mayor Baldelli-Hunt did not bring that offer of benefit to the council for us to approve as part of the compensation to Elise Parry. So she's been receiving the benefit in violation of the ordinance. And what this is to do is to ask the council, under the current circumstances, for her continued work for the city, to include both a pay and the health benefit as a compensation package, and as a waiver of the law, so to speak, because it's in the benefit of the city to get her services to the extent that we would do this. Because in most cases, you would not.
And so may also, Councilwoman, Elise recently had a baby, and so we're adding the baby as well.
Okay. So is she currently, she currently does not have insurance? Or do we take the insurance away?
No, we never took the insurance away.
So is still, she has insurance?
For herself, and so now we're fixing it so that it's in conformance with her life.
Okay. No, I just, I remember a conversation, knowing that she had insurance, so that's why it was, you know?
Well, she had it, but she had it without the authority of the council granting it as a benefit or compensation.
But her services have not stopped.
They have not. Any other discussion?
Council President.
Councilman Canoia.
So, yeah, this if-pass makes legal that which has been occurring. Number one, and number two, as the solicitor indicated, it adds another individual. So mayor, has, does Ms. Parry come to the office at all?
She has not come to the office since I've been mayor.
Okay.
Let me jump in here. Director, did she come to the office before he was the mayor?
She, once in a while.
Okay.
All right. So this is nothing against Ms. Parry, she's a very competent individual, so this isn't, I don't have an issue with Ms. Parry, to be pretty clear. But the irony is not lost on me when we have the former mayor and the current mayor-elect jump up and down and suggest that the fact that the, she alleges that the solicitor only comes in two hours a day. So that's a problem. We have a solicitor that only comes to the office two hours a day, is more than capable of working from his own law office, but he comes in every day, typically every day, for at least two hours, and that's a problem. But we have a tax assessor that doesn't show up at all effectively. And if you know anything about the tax department versus the law department, I assure you, there's far more activity and questions coming from residents into the tax office than into the solicitor's office. I'm pretty sure people aren't rolling in on a regular basis to ask the solicitor a question, but I'm damn sure they go into the tax assessor's office and ask lots of questions. So it does amuse me, the irony of it, that on the one hand, we lecture and jump up and down about a, quote, "not having a solicitor more than two hours a day," which frankly is the norm in most communities, but we have a tax assessor that never shows up to the office. And somehow, that's acceptable. Not even one day a week, or half a day a week. And again, that's, that's not, that's not Ms. Parry's fault. She's doing what she wants to do, and that's fine, but we allow it, and it is what it is. It's, this goes back to the whole issue of not having a tax assessor for years now, because we create ourselves a crutch, and then we're never forced to deal with the issue, because we kind of crutch along in a less-than-optimal way. That being said, I'd like to make an amendment to Section 1 at the very end, where it says, "family healthcare coverage for Elise Parry and her daughter." I would like to add, effective the date in which the ordinance shall become effective. So I make that motion.
Did you get that?
They'll send it to me tomorrow.
Okay. So you have a motion to amend, to read effective upon the date that the ordinance takes effect.
Yep. Just so there's no confusion, again, this is making...
Is there a second to that?
Yep.
I'll second it, just so we can have the discussion. Discussion.
Council President, before we get into discussion, can I just, there is no intention to cancel the healthcare in the meantime.
Okay.
I knew where you were going to go.
Yeah, I know, I was just wondering why we have to put it in if it's not canceled. You know, like the effectiveness.
Because the ordinance, this, just want to be clear, it's not until the ordinance is passed. Otherwise, it's illegal, and I don't want to be part of that anymore.
Right.
That's all. It's just trying to do it the right way, that's all.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Canoia?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
On the amendment.
Yes. Councilman Susie?
Yes.
President Ward?
Yes. And the amendment is approved. And on the main motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Susie?
Yes.
President Ward?
Yes. And the ordinance passes for the first time.
Council President?
Mayor.
I would just like to reiterate, I know that that's been done, but I will be sure tomorrow morning that everyone knows that the healthcare will continue as it is. I just want to make sure no one's concerned about her losing healthcare.
Thank you.
22R148, authorizing a cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Councilman Canoia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Discussion.
Council President?
Councilman.
This is an abatement, we've talked a lot about abatements, this is an abatement of $20,677 for this year's taxes, tax year '22, and it's a variety of over-assessed, out-of-business, wrong party, over-assessed, homestead not applied, et cetera. So total of $20,677.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving 22R149, say aye.
Aye.
148, I'm sorry, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. Just a quick little question. I, okay, I just wanted to make sure I had the right one open. Next.
22R149, authorizing a cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Gonzalez.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Susie. Discussion.
Council President, this is another abatement for $5,235.59 related to tangible property tax that was over-assessed for the current year.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. And 149 is approved.
22R150, authorizing a cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Gonzalez. Seconded by?
I'll second.
Councilman Susie. This one is an abatement, a carryforward of some type, for some tangibles for $7,396.90. Apparently entering the assessment, there was an error made, and the new assessment is actually zero, so it's abating the entire amount of the tax on tangible property. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. It passes four to nothing.
22R151, authorizing a cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve.
To approve by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Seconded by?
I'll second.
Councilman Susie. Discussion. This one is simply a classification error related to, looks like it was, yes, it was classified under the commercial rate and is actually residential. The abatement is $5,957.27. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. It passes unanimously.
22R152, creating a special event vendor permit for the Main Street Holiday Stroll.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Gonzalez. Seconded by Councilman Canoia. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. It passes unanimously.
22R153, a resolution authorizing the director of Public Works to purchase three F-350 trucks with plows from Tasker Ford for a price, for a total price of $163,485.45 utilizing the city's opera funds.
Motion made by?
Uh, motion approved.
Councilman Canoia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Any discussion? Done? Pretty self-explanatory. Best of luck. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it, and it passes four to nothing.
22R154, authorizing a cancellation of certain taxes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Seconded by?
Council President? Just, I just wanted to inform the council that this will allow us to settle a case that we have pending.
Okay. Seconded by?
I'll second.
Councilman Susie. This one is for settlement to the case of an agreement with the Blue Home for the aged to establish the new tax rate, and it's for an abatement of $54,853.53. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it.
22R155, authorizing bi-weekly stipend payments to tax clerk Lori Flanagan.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilman Canoia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Susie. Discussion.
Council President?
Councilman Canoia.
As noted, this is for Ms. Flanagan, who is receiving a stipend for doing some extra work in the law, the tax department. Is Ms. Flanagan in the union?
Yes.
Yeah. So, as we all know, with the union, there's certain duties they do, and there's a fence around that. She's doing outside that fence, so we're going to pay her a stipend, which is fine. I would make one amendment in Section 2. It has account number 010031. I would amend that to 010032, because 31 is the treasures department, and the intention was for the tax department, so amend it to 032. You agree with that, Chris?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we have an amendment.
Second.
Second, seconded by Councilman Gonzalez. On the amendment, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. And on the main motion to approve?
Council President.
Council, oh, mayor.
Thank you. Just real quick, I just want to be clear, this was put on here, this is another housekeeping measure, because the individual had been receiving a stipend without council authorization, and we're just trying to clear it up, and again, to make it legal, and do it the right way. So that's really why it came up today, and why it's on your docket tonight.
My only question is, within the parameters of a collective bargaining agreement, and it specifies duties generally for positions by title and ordinance, when we grant stipends such as these, is it with, is it require a separate agreement or memorandum from the union in order to do this, because you're paying people outside of their grade?
Absolutely, but this person has been getting this stipend for a while.
I agree, but is there anything in writing from the union authorizing this extra compensation?
I didn't even know she...
And when it, and who will make the determination when it should end?
I didn't even know she was getting a stipend, so I can't answer that, but I will look into it. I didn't know she was getting a stipend until you did the order.
Okay.
So there may be one, but I didn't do it.
Yeah, no, I'm only concerned about, yes, it should have been approved in advance, but it should also be approved by the, by the union. And then, at the conclusion, when there's a measurable point in time where it ends, there should be some stipulation as to when that would occur. Or somehow, somebody can objectively measure that and say that it's over, whether it's because we have a new full-time assessor, or whatever condition would exist that would trigger that.
And my assumption would be that the union is aware of it and acquiesce to it, otherwise they would have filed a grievance.
I don't disagree. But these are things I prefer in writing, but I guess we'll get this done tonight so that she can continue to get the stipend. But I would hope at some point, something can be rendered to a writing and an agreement with the administration and the union that describes this circumstance and establishes at what point this would come to a conclusion, so that the council can be informed about when that's going to occur, because we'll be needing to look at this as a condition in compensation that's put into a budget for next year if it's continuing through that long. That's the only reason I bring it up. Again, one of those goofy formalities that I like to get involved with, that we really should be doing if we're doing our job properly. So, that being said, is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the resolution is amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the ayes have it. It passes four to nothing. And who will make that motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Canoia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and this meeting is adjourned at 9:04. Thank you very much.